All right. We will call to order the agenda meeting of the Wabick City Council. Shannon, can I have a roll call, please? Yep. Okay, we will start with the administrators, staff, consultant updates. We'll go right to item A, Mr. Bergstrom. You want to head up to the... Just hit that rectangular button right there. There you go.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Good day to talk to you about the building condition assessment that was prepared a few months ago for you. So today I thought we'd just walk through at a high level the assessment for the three buildings. I'm going to try and read the report to you and go through all the details, but talk about some of the things we saw and then some of the recommendations we're making, certainly open it up and answer any good questions, your comments after that. Try to take some next steps or see where you'd like to go from there. I'll start out with maybe just a high-level overview of what the project failed and what we did as part of this assessment. The conditions assessment, the first step is to review existing drawings, look at the available information you had, reports, drawings, things like that. Then our team went out to review the site building. So we included an architectural, mechanical, electrical engineer in each of the sites. We did not send a structural engineer out there. We did have a few things that structural engineers looked at, some pictures and things like that, but we didn't see any necessary significant structural issues that warranted having a structural engineer visit the site. The review was, I want to call it a little bit of a higher-level review. We didn't necessarily, you know, take finishes down. We didn't take ceilings down with the carpet up, things like that to look at the existing conditions. We didn't open up walls if you need demolition. So it was really limited to the visual things that we could see of the building. So the assessment also was not comprehensive to the sense that we didn't, we didn't try to identify every doorknob that didn't work or every light bulb that worked out. We're looking at big system items, roofing, exterior cladding, interior finishes, mechanical, electrical systems. So the bigger ticket items, not necessarily down to the outlets and the bulbs. But hopefully that makes sense, kind of gives you a little bit of a picture of what we were looking for and where we were going. We did this with the intent of trying to identify current deficiencies, things that from a maintenance standpoint, maybe have needed some attention or that we thought needed some attention to preserve the life of the building, to expand and extend the life of the building, prevent degradation or further deterioration of facilities. I will say overall, the facilities were in good condition. We didn't find anything that was a, you know, a significant item to the point where we thought this is a dangerous situation or necessarily need immediate attention. That was a positive note. From that, maybe any questions at this point with that overview, right up into the building?
I think that's good, and I think, you know, a big part of the ask of coming out here was to, you know, kind of rank things in an order of priority as we get into, as you kind of get into more of the individual building.
So, okay. We can definitely touch on that topic as we get to the end here. Maybe I'll give a high-level overview of the different recommendations we had for each of the buildings, starting with City Hall. And I will put to page 12 in the report, which is an overview of our recommendations. You'll see there, so exterior improvements that we recommended, replacement of asphalt chingle roofing, entry stair railing at the main front entry, some repair work down there. Exterior masonry repair, which was a fairly minor or small item, the loading dock area on the back of the building. Then replacing the exterior windows was a large ticket item. Interior upgrades, we're replacing general interior finishes, carpet paint, ceilings throughout. As a general rule, we generally say those things should be upgraded periodically, not, not one of those things that's critical to the overall lifespan of the building, to keep the building fresh. Plumbing, the only real plumbing thing was replacing a gas or water heater. Some HVC items, we're replacing boiler components or the boiler and the components and then temperature controls throughout the building. Occupancy sensors on the lighting system was both an energy-saving type of item. And then security upgrades, one of the things we were asked to look at is what could we do from a security standpoint to these buildings? So the things that we had identified, adding some door access control systems, card readers to some of the doors to provide more control access for staff. Adding security camera systems throughout the building, retrofitting the lobby with some ballistic paneling, if that's a concern. Okaying the council desk, adding some ballistic protection for the council. And then adding staff tables to the, secure staff tables to the council chambers. So where you have additional people sitting around the table, including those in, in more of a secure type, bullet-resistant type of desk. Any questions with those recommendations? If I can run through all three buildings and we can come back, that's the easier way to do it. All right, so the second building we look at was the Pavilion. The Pavilion was built in 1999, based on our research, generally speaking, in good condition. Jump to page 20 of our report has the recommendations. What's in the recommendations here are all relatively minor. Asphalt chingle roofing replacement was also recommended here. Refinishing of some wood trim, some of the paint has started to peel. Repairing a door threshold, a pretty minor item, but there's a little bit of trip hazard that could be happening there. Adding a handicap parking stall and then adding some additional insulation for the roof for increased energy performance of the building. HVAC performance, our recommendations, improving or replacing large gas-fired air handling unit was probably the biggest ticket item there. Replacement of the gas furnaces and condensing units and then temperature controls, again, good energy savings endeavor. Occupancy sensors on the lighting system and then again for security, adding security cameras and door access controls. The final building that we'll take a look at was the Public Works. Public Works building was constructed in 1991, based on the research and drawings we had. Again, to the recommendations on page 26, 27. A few more here, given the use of the building. Replacement of the overhead garage doors. Replacement of the exterior walk doors, where we're starting to show some deterioration. Exterior windows, pipe ballers with the concrete apron on the front, feel some of the photos and see they've been damaged. It looks like there's rust keeping the concrete there. Handicap parking stalls and then again additional added insulation, savings measure. Interior improvements, the restroom, and finishes to the restroom currently is not an accessible restroom by current standards. So renovation of that would be recommended. Then replacement of interior finishes, photos of where it's been, the building's finishes are fairly, fairly aged and could do some updating. HVAC recommendations, gas-fired furnace, welding exhaust system, some of these, and then the, sorry, the last one there was CO2, the next page, NO2 detector system. Some of those are considered more life safety items, having welding or some diesel or gas engines running inside the garage and they don't have proper exhaust, they're more of a little bit more of a health concern there that we would recommend those items be approved. Turn strain systems and then gas water heater, a water heater for the boiling items or the plumbing items, lighting upgrades, exit signs, occupancy sensors. The exit signs, we would recommend that, again, more of a life safety item that we generally look at to make sure that they're up to code enough for our... And then again, we have some security things, security access. I can pause there. Any questions or if you want me to go into any more detail on any of the items that we have recommended at this point?
So is there, is there anything, you know, from like a overall priority standpoint? Like you should really take care of the Pavilion roof, that's a lot more high up on the list than say, you know, anything like the council chair?
So we, we did not, in the report, we did not prioritize them, I'm sure you've noticed. If we were to prioritize them, which is a little bit of a difficult thing for us to do, because we want to also understand and incorporate your priorities in the city. But generally speaking, if you were to come to me and say, how should we prioritize? Because I would always start with life safety first. So that's going to be anything with the, you know, the gas systems, anything to do with exiting, anything to do with the boss, Public Works Garage, signs, those types of life. Those are the most important, the most critical from a life safety standpoint, before these buildings, while we can spend some of them, we want to make sure they're safe on their... From, from there, I think the second, second recommendation I would have is to look at, and this is where things start to become a little bit, we want to balance what we see from professional design side with what your, your goals are. We would start to recommend anything that would conserve the, would increase the lifespan of the building. So that would be roofing, windows, things, you know, trim that's maybe called the basic work that was noted on the City Hall. Things that would allow water infiltration, moisture infiltration, things that if they were left to continue to deteriorate, would start to cause potential problems, increase the lifespan of the building or create larger structural issues down the road. That would generally be our second item to recommend to consider. And then third on that list would probably be the security and the energy improvement items. There again, I want to caution that that depends on kind of where we're balancing staff, field. Security items fall in, they may be the most prevalent to you, that's a huge, very, very top of mind, my priority too. In which case I would suggest we want to talk about them also. But generally speaking, it's, it's safety, then ensuring the envelope of the building is secure and that you have a good weather type of facilities to exacerbate any of the problems that are currently out there. Then followed up with the security.
I don't know if the council should have a meeting and we should discuss what you want prioritized. I mean, to me, like my personal opinion is to increase the lifespan of the building. That would be my priority, but I don't know how the rest of the council members feel about that.
Yes, if I may, we can certainly go back and prioritize this for you, but for us to do it, I guess there's a little bit of concern that we do it in the back, not understanding what your priorities are. So there could be some discussion about that. I would be happy to come back with what we see as the priority. But again, I don't want to jump ahead and give you a priority list that doesn't match what your supervision is.
Well, I guess I would say, I mean, even if you make, make a priority list for us, at least then we do it and then kind of make ours, opinion of that also. At least then we would have an idea of what you think we should be doing, then we can budget or figure out where we should be putting money.
Absolutely. I think another thing to consider is, you know, you could, you could take this building by building, you could take this by type of upgrade, you could do all the roofs, but say we're going to do one building for the next three years. And there's a lot of different ways to look at that and break that down as well. I think those are some of the other considerations to take into the box here as we move forward. But we certainly could prioritize and help you do that, that would benefit.
And I think one of the things that we were looking for was, you know, the Pavilion roof is, is failing. That should be definitely taken care of, you know, before we worry about the, you know, ballers outside of Public Works.
I would agree.
Kind of an overall, like, you should do this because if you don't, this is going to fail. If there was anything that was on that. That I agree with.
Mayor and Council, another aspect to this project, which is not in this proposal, but it's part of our overall arrangement and agreement in relation with SCH, is the funding side. On that side, we've had for years, we've had Mike Larson from SCH has worked with us on grant, grant applications, grant-seeking legislative-type stuff. Now there is actually, there's another staffer from SCH who's been working with us on a lot of stuff. Ellie, Ellie Polhaber, Ellie Polhaber, who actually, she was the one who did the, our latest LCCMR application, start to finish, did some lengthy grant applications on the PUC side, start to finish. So that would be the other part that goes along with this, just part of that overall umbrella with SCH. It's kind of the nature of, the nature of how this goes, if, if there's a lot of roof grants out there, I think roofs probably climb up on the, on the priority list. And if there's a lot of HVAC grants out there, I think maybe HVAC pops up. So that's, they'll have to be involved as well.
Anything else, people? Can I leave you on the spot for one, because you're on the agenda as well?
Sure.
If anybody has any questions regarding new business number 10D, the approval of professional services at SCH for engineering of the public safety building, if there's any questions, Mr. Bergstrom is here. Is your guy. Just wanted to grab you for that before you sit down, so, or leave here.
I'll be here.
Here. I guess one of the questions I had was, okay, so right now we have the million dollars, correct? You have the million-dollar grant?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't actually have the money to build this facility?
Yet.
For the funding. Do you think we will be able to get the funding? Because I'm wondering if we, I mean, because this contract says that you will go either to the whole phase. I mean, what if we don't get the funding? We have plans against that, where I'm at.
Well, we need the plans to get the funding. We've just kind of jumping ahead through my stuff, but we did secure another billion dollars from the minerals bill in the session. So there's, there's now two million dollars. So that money is growing, but we have to start on it now. That's, the money was appropriated for this, so if we were to just not use it, that would probably not go very well with the, with the IRR.
I guess my question was, do we, we do phases or do we do the whole thing? Do we need to do the whole thing or can we do like phase one? No, phase one is like they describe, it's described in here, phase one, pay them for that. Or, I mean, I really didn't know.
Yeah, this would be considered phase one.
Okay. And then I was wondering if he would help us secure funding? Because that's not, I didn't see that in the contract anywhere that SCH would help us secure.
And in that, again, as part of that overall relationship with SCH, we've got access in the services of Mike Larson and now Ellie has been doing a lot of those, in addition to the lobbying services that they have, people don't have the capital that are doing lobbying, which has kind of led to the funding we have so far. And that's, that's something that's just always come with having SCH as our state of the city.
I guess my last question, and I don't know if this is for you or, it only describes it as a fire station here, but it'll be fire and ambulance, right? It'll be more of a public.
Public safety. There'll be, there'll be police there.
Okay. All right, because yeah, it only says fire station, so I wasn't sure about that. Those are my, those are my questions.
Are there any other questions at all? All right. You're off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. With that, seeing we're down to 13 minutes, we'll go through any council questions that you may have on the agenda. I would also encourage the council that if you have any consent agenda item questions that you ask those here versus the lengthy process of pulling, approving and re-filing. We'll start with Councilperson Berg again. Councilman Lehman? Councilman Ian? Councilman Waller?
Okay, for the gambling permits for Virginia Elks up at Neighbors, was there no local nonprofits that wanted to have that?
There was one and they're no longer.
Okay, because I thought that we had, you know, given a permit to somebody. And then I'm just wondering, will they invest in, in our community because they're from Virginia, Virginia Elks? Get the idea?
So we do get a 10% gambling tax, which is what funds the association for our... But the, the thing about any charity is that you have to ask for the fund. They don't just give it back. I think we have Virginia Elks at Vise Pizza, I believe, is, no, oh, it's a Clime, Climes at Vise. Is Elks at, or is Clime at both now? So is the Elks down at... I'm on fixed income, I can't play full-time.
You know where your money is.
Yeah, maybe I still play a little bit of full-time. So, yeah.
So that's something that, that we would or Baco, somebody would have to pursue if we wanted to try to get more money. Okay. And then I was wondering, when our firefighters respond to like how they were working on the wildfires? So who pays them? Does the city pay them or does it come out of like Forest Service Fund?
Oh, are you out of power? We just checked it, it was only down one bar, so three to go.
Yeah, so the, the pay structure for the firefighters, it's paid through the city of Wabick. The city of Wabick has a cooperator agreement with the Minnesota DNR. And so they pay for an hourly rate for our equipment. There's a defined rate in the contract. So they pay for the equipment use and then we pay the stuff on the city. And then we invoice, have the fires done or have the assignments done, so we invoice the DNR. That's kind of how the process works.
I was just curious about that. Thank you, Dan. My last one is Public Works, on their report, I'm a little bit confused. There's closed and there's finished. And I'm not really sure what the difference is. And some hours still are not listed on the closed or finished.
Jeff, did you want to handle it or do you want me to grab it?
I can cover it. So Mayor and Council, on the hour thing, just a matter of continuing to work with the guys to make sure they fill those out. And we now have three categories in there. There's, there's requested, four categories, requested, open, closed and finished. Finished means that a, something like a, a tree fell over and it got removed and it's, it's finished and stuff. Closed would be something like mowing a certain area that needs to be done over and over again. So rather than starting to one over, you'd open and close that job and that'll tally the hours for that job as, as a whole. So you don't wind up with just 300 work orders where you're able to open and close those recurring ones.
And then to add to that, something like, say, the mowing at the cemetery is tracked under the cemetery work order. And at the end of the season, we'll be able to know how many man-hours, what the costs were to maintain the cemetery or if you could break it down to ball fields or as areas of town. So we just kind of revamped that at our staff last month. So I think we're, we're definitely made some really progress on this.
Last thing is we're looking at a weekly cleaning schedule with a company. What does that include? What would the weekly cleaning schedule include? Would it be all three quarters of the City Hall?
Yes.
Like cleaning the bathroom, vacuuming, scrubbing?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Nope, nope. We'll double your rent and then you'll get cleaning service. Okay, and everything I have is on the agenda, so. Jeff, if you wanted to, did you have anything to add here?
Mayor and Council, quick, I'll cover what's not on the agenda. There are a few nuisance claims that are pending and open. They are the, probably the largest ones we have. So that's going to, they're going to have, take a little more time to clear those up with the, with the nuisance complaints that we have, giving them a five or six-day notice to clear that up before we come in and do a couple thousand dollars for the cleanup, really wasn't going to work. So those are, those are in process. There is, I missed something on the age-friendly communities action items. We do have, there will be people from age-friendly communities here to, to present. We've got their presentation materials in front of you. And then still working on something for the maintenance and ongoing landscape for the Main Street project. We do have, we're getting towards the end of the Hoffmann, Hoffmann and McAmara is the subcontractor who's doing it now. A little bit of time left on that, been talking with them and one of the citizens has also been talking with them about what, what goes into that maintenance. So those, those will be on future agendas. And I can run through real quick here of the new business items. Authorizing lease purchase agreement, that is the financing on the truck, the fire truck that was approved at a previous meeting. So just a lot of bank paperwork to fill up there. The accepting the donation, that is a donation from First Bank Gilbert to be used kind of toward, toward housing. And there is not a lot of real clear parameters on that. One of the things that happened in the last legislative session is because there was so much on it, they kind of pushed out a lot of money for these programs without a whole lot of details around them, which is... Overall, that's very good. The money's out there, the money's, money's available, but it's, it's not really clearly earmarked or bullet pointed, but it will give us, give us a decent amount of money to start as... Unfortunately, I was grateful as we are for the donation. Unfortunately, at these days, $30,000 in that, in that venue is a smaller amount of money, but very much appreciated. The resolution calling a public hearing on the question of establishing EDA. The council had at a workshop previously expressed the desire to form an EDA to give us some more options on contracting development. I think I've said this, people have heard me say this several times, that the public hearing, the reason that there are things legally required for a public hearing is because people are kind of surprised. The council is not allowed people to talk at council meetings legally. Some, some city councils, some cities don't have a comment period where they take that. So there's certain things where the state says, oh, you have to allow public comment on this. So it seems a little bit extra formal, that's why. Just so that they, so they know that people do have the ability to weigh in on that. The professional service agreement with SCH, Brian talked a little bit about that, we kind of covered that. 10E, acceptance of resignation of the city administrator. I'm a... Not know as an emotional guy, touchy-feely guy, but it might kind of go that way. It has been an excellent 18 years here. And feel very fortunate for the, for the time that I've had. It's been great work, I think. Acceptance of resignation from fire captain position, approval of leave of absence request. Austin Berg has put in the appropriate request for that. Approval proposal for City Hall cleaning services, touched on that a little bit. That came out of an initial kind of acknowledgement or offer from BEAC, the beating that the building takes for some of the events, they looked at trying to, trying to pick some of that up and try to do some maintenance. So it started out as just some floor work and some repair and the, the regular routine cleaning services were so reasonable that we wanted to bring it to the council and continue with that, to have those services done. Approval of purchase for, a pickup for Public Works, this one has been tricky. We do need, we will need to buy a fully outfitted newer, new one-ton truck to use. But in the meantime, we have been lacking in proper, for most part, transportation and for our summer group. There are, the used vehicle market is starting to open up a little bit, but things don't stick around for, for all that long. So looking for some authorization to be able to make those decisions. Approval of purchase on the power cut for new ambulance, that came up a little bit when we had ordered the, the new ambulance at a previous meeting, just to kind of complete the build on that. And then the approval of the new city logo design, that is, mayor's been working with, with some folks on that to come up with some options there that wanted to bring to the council and get some, get some input and approval.
Can you have that ready to put on the screen too? Because the packet that got emailed out colors.
Okay. And I, I did do a little searching on what the process is for approving the city logo and I found nothing. So, so let's see what the council wants to do on, on the approval of that logo.
Um, well, it is 17:59, I will adjourn the agenda meeting. Um, well, it is 1759 and I will adjourn the agenda meeting. Go to 30 second window here, folks. Shannon, can I have a roll call, please? Here? If you're able, please stand for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll move on to item four, agenda approval, including any consent agenda items to be pulled. Please note that we will be adding item seven A, the age friendly Minnesota presentation. Now, it's been motion seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. I oppose, motion carries. Item five, consent agenda. It's been motion and supported to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Opposed, motion carries. Item six, there is none. Item seven, presentations, age friendly Minnesota. I could ask you to come to the, there's a little green or a little square button there, rectangle button.
Great. All right, does that work? Hello? I'm good. Gotcha. Okay, thanks. So I had a presentation that I sent. I don't know if we get that pulled up or not. Perfect, sounds great. Well, thank you so much for letting me come and talk to you guys tonight. Thanks to Patty for the invitation. My name is Georgia Lane. I work for the Arrowhead Area Agency on Aging. We are a division of ARDC or the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission. So I've been working now for about three years with communities throughout our region on helping prepare for aging demographics. And I'm gonna share some information with you guys tonight and I'll definitely have time for questions and I'll try to keep it quick. So next slide. All right, so just a quick question to start off with for you here in room and folks who are watching. What's it take to age well in your community? We know that in our rural areas, it takes a lot, right? And it looks a lot different in rural areas than it does in metro. Next slide. We also know that aging is so cool that everyone is doing it from the moment that we're born to the moment that we die. We are all getting older and this is not always a bad thing. This can be a very good thing. Next slide. We have to think about aging as something that happens to somebody else, but it's actually for all of us. I pulled some data here from the Northern Connection. You can see here that in Wabak, one in three people are over the age of 60 and 44% of people are over the age of 50. So you guys are about on par with the rest of rural spots in the state that we are aging more fast faster than urban areas. Next slide. And we're going to continue to live longer, healthier lives. Back in 1860, actually, the average life expectancy was about 39.8 years old. And here you can see in 1960, average life expectancy was around 100. And that's going to continue to grow, right? So because of expenses and public health things, we're gonna live longer lives. Next slide. And some research here shows that half of today's 5 year olds will old, will live to be 100. So we have to think differently about aging. We have to think differently about the last, the final 30 years that we get. And age friendly community work is one tool that's helped helped us and helped communities think differently about how we prepare for aging demographics. Next slide. So we want to think about people 65 and older, 50 year old or however old you consider old. Everyone in our community is needed, right? We 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 want to think about valued community members and not older adults as liabilities and the problems that are associated. If you think of the majority of people that you know who are over 65, maybe just look around the room. Think of your neighbors, think of who you see in a grocery store, right? We have an aging demographic and we especially in rural communities, want to keep everyone here, right? And so how do we think about the work ethic and the innovation that we're known for in Minnesota to be able to make great communities for us to live as we age? Next slide. So 93%, you can flip through, there's a couple stats here. 93% of people 65 and older live independently in their own communities. Only about 4.5% live in assisted, living in 2.5% live in long term care. So that shows us that communities are the places for people to age. We want to age in our communities. We don't want to move to the cities. We don't want to have to move to Duluth or to figure metro areas. We want our communities to be a place where we can
Very, very popular. And then I believe it was the planning commission that said they, you know, they'd like to see less of the swirliness. And that's where we, we kind of did the not that, that's the version. Yeah, and then that, so that that was the, that was the, oh, no, one more.
There's all three of them there. I like the middle. You like the third one.
Well, the third one is not the final. The final, if you look at the last page, the final has less of the or the second to last page. Jeff, go to page 15, shows it next to everybody else's. It had less of the the swirliness that, you know, and it so I originally liked the one that was the best with City Hall and the gazebo side by side. But to to keep the tradition of the current gazebo, it was it was keeping the gazebo in the middle and offsetting the city hall. The opposite of the city hall allowed less of the curly cubes. I I don't know the technical term.
Scroll, scrolling?
It would be that one right there next to the yeah, that yes. So that would be the, and these are just some package examples that we can add into, you know, for return address on a label. You know, there's times where you're gonna need a stamp or a seal or something. That would be the the branding package part. 14. Yes, page 14. Simplify, clean up the lines of the gazebo and lighten the background was the last suggestions. Any thoughts on Northside? Well, technically both of them, because one is the colored normal version, but you know, you get into a grayscale for mass copying or print copy. That's what it looks like in grayscale. It's the same logo. But from a design standpoint, the one on the right is just a grayscale. So that would be the, that's standard in any design feature. So and the thing was is that the Civic Association wanted to get new banners printed for the Californian Parade and everything else, but we can't get it printed until we have a a decent scalable logo. So that was the, that was the whole push for all this and it just kind of turned into what we should be following, our own variant, our logo. Well, in the interest of time, I will make a motion to approve the U vote. Now, now that we're on that, I kind of broke my own rule there. Is there any discussion?
I would like, just for one other option is to get to your, whatever, page 14 revised logo. Get rid of the city hall and get that other, on the other side as well. You know what I mean? Get rid of the city hall and get the other scroll on the left side also.
So that would be two, that would be two up there.
Yeah, but the scroll is different.
Oh.
Yeah, the scroll, there's a lot more
So there's a lot. But just to kind of get a different option, different idea.
Yeah, I, for some reason, I don't care if it's city hall or not.
Oh, there's the city. There was a, there was quite a bit of discussion based on the putting the city of on there, because originally it was not on there. However, because of the, well, for one, it's an official logo, so saying city of is more professional. But the amount of trouble, I guess, we have with differentiating from Wabak Township to City of Wabak. And the amount of phone calls that come in on that basis was a reason behind making sure city of.
No, I I like city of, but I don't like city hall.
Yeah.
Number two doesn't count. Was there a second to the motion?
Yes. So we'll just bring it to a vote and then it fails to go back. Unless there's any more discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. I opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to item 11, open public forum. If anybody wishes to address the council, please step to the podium.
Yeah, I have some short things as far as what came up as far as the donations that to me. $30,000 certainly is a very nice gesture on the part of Bank Gilbert Bank. Just a suggestion, H R A and the E D A, particularly H R A is, we've had one, but it's never been funded. I think E D A also at some point will be looking for funding. I would suggest that you really take a look at that as to earmarking that in some ways, perhaps splitting up, but that's your call. To, to the chief teacher. My understanding, and I address this to the mayor here, I understand there's some new money for CCTV out there. Some new for cameras and so forth, is that right? One of your, one of your crew indicated that there so. But some apparent, has some new money not become available? To Jeff, has there been any further update on the school property in terms of when it's gonna come up for auction in year one? Masaba Trail Pass. If I could, I'll take the initiative here. If I can get a copy of that Masaba Trail Pass, I'll put it in the history times so that people know that there is actually a pass where they can get it. And Shannon, there is, it's actually artwork, right? You know, we have something that we can have photo. Okay. As far as when is our contract up with the planting, with the state's contract as far as plants are concerned on Main Street? So do we have a plan in place to how we're gonna take care of that with our own crew, how we're gonna water it? Do we have the equipment?
State work on right now.
Okay. If you look at the the I-works, and I know that you had a meeting here not long ago, maybe last week or so. If you looked at the report of I-works, which throws a lot of stuff on there and so forth, but what's not there is how many hours? I mean, that's, that was the whole idea here of being able to put some accountability here. I mean, if I were looking at this and judging this from a budgetary standpoint, I would say why do we have four people? There aren't enough hours there to be able to definitively say we've got four people and we can account for. So the I-works, and I supported the mayor and I still do that, it's a very good tool. But at the same time, I'm hoping that whatever happened here in the meeting, to train these people is reflected the I-works reports that come out on a monthly basis. Otherwise, when it comes to budgetary considerations, you really need to say, you know, four enough? Do we need another one? Maybe we can only get by with three. That's was the whole idea here, is to be able to get some accountability. And as far as the logo is concerned, I'll take the logo artwork and I'll put it in the history times. It's just a little story so that we get some play on.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice? All right, everybody's favorite motion. A motion second to adjourn the meeting at 1914. All in favor? I. Meeting is adjourned. Do you?
I don't think it should state only one area. If it's for Wabak, it needs to be all of Wabak.
And in what that number three was, what we were discussing at that time, and this is where maybe maybe, maybe plain language should be kind of a a goal for our for our update here. So provide for expansion of housing options within the downtown central business district. Is kind of a convoluted way of saying, we were discussing the the lack or the kind of the dying. It used to be that small towns like Wabak always, you'd go downtown and there's a business on the on the ground floor. And then the upper story would be, and it was always kind of considered a nice, a good starter apartment for somebody that was just starting out or something that, you know, an elderly person came back and, you know, was it low maintenance, right downtown, close to everything, rent was relatively cheap and you had that. Over the years, all the Wabak businesses kind of one by one lost that as the the apartments didn't get kept up and then pretty soon it wasn't worth putting the time into it for the rent you would get, then it's gone away. There's been some some revitalization revitalization of that, we've got some in there. The short term rental kind of was a curveball on that, that if you're going to do that and you're gonna put living space on the second floor, doing it on a nightly rental was more money, less added than doing long term leases. So not exactly sure how to deal with that, but that's come up quite a bit even in our housing meetings that between the, it was just kind of a, even just part of the small town charm type thing that your your main street had these businesses and shops. And then there was always, I mean, in the town I grew up in, that was yeah, there was always people that had their apartments up there that was a good kind of starting point, low cost, low maintenance place to live. So that's what that section three is looking for, is trying to bring that back. But just providing for housing as a whole, if you create a new one or But just providing for housing as a whole, if you create a new one or within one of the other ones.
Under four, it does say, provide for resilient housing design, construction, renovation, and management. That maximizes costs effective, I mean, I don't know if that would be the appropriate place to put it, because it is about residential. Or housing in Boawabik.
Well, I think if you look at goal one, and then policy E, engage the developing community, including realtors, builders, lenders, and landlords. Code compliant, attractive, and affordable housing that meets the diverse needs of the community. First thing, so that's affordable housing with lowercase letters. Affordable housing always spurs some conversation because of what some people think it is, and what the implications are, and there is, you, you will see affordable housing with capital letters, where it's a proper noun, and it, it means an actual
Concept or whatever.
Yeah, affordable housing, if it, if it's capitalized, means a, it's income limited to a certain threshold, certain percentage of the median income and all that type of stuff. Subsidies around it and all that type of stuff, and we have a lot of conversations when we talk about our housing stock. We want people to be able to afford housing. And then when you start talking, well, then we, we, we need affordable housing. Then people start looking, well, but, you know, that's HUD, section eight, to, well, no, we need, we need, we mean lowercase affordable housing. The, the problem is, there's this creep in the, in the terminology that because affordable housing had a, a negative connotation, then they went to workforce housing. Well, no, that's, you don't, and then workforce housing became, well, I think you're just calling affordable housing by, by, by a different name. One of the ones that came out recently was attainable housing, which, it's attainable because you can afford it, so it's affordable housing. So using those, those terms is just kind of, kind of loaded. I, I think there's a way to say diverse housing options or, or, see, there's a section here that says says, above that, it says income levels with a variety of product types, but then meet the life cycle needs of all Boawabik residents. That's another, that's another way to kind of, you know, the, the life cycle is, well, you need a starter home, and then maybe as you get into
Enter home.
You know, so you, you know, some people are going to get the starter home, and then they go up, up, up from there, some people are maybe not going to get the starter home, and they have you know, they, they go from a type of, you know, some, some rental housing or something like that, to then into the senior housing. But that, the different varieties in the life cycle house, because life cycle housing kind of accounts for that stuff. But that, that, that conversation on affordable housing tends to bog down conversations, so if we can i- if we can use just more general, we, we want a wide variety of housing options or something.
Is there a way then of just stating that we have a, a goal to have a grant program? One of our goals is having a grant program for housing, you know, more affordable housing in Boawabik? If we actually, I mean, we do, you said we did have this, or it is coming, does it need to be in here?
I don't think it would hurt to have as a policy.
I agree.
Let's establish establish programs to financially assist with housing containment or something like that. I, I'm trying to stay away from convoluting the language like we're, like we're, like we're working against right now, but some way to put in plain language of establishing.
Why don't you do like a call for details on current, how they incentives or something like that? Maybe not to call, but just so these, these are pretty generic as far as, hey, you know, why don't you ask what we've got currently? Because at least we get calls for a certain type of relief, then at least we know what the market's looking for. And then act on that.
What if we, we could kind of cover both of those by something like provide access to program, provide access to programs to assist with housing or something like that. I, I still think I, and
Would you, would you put it right after goals and policies, five point six, right after that first paragraph, or where would you put it? Or under goal one?
I was kind of looking at it as a, as one F under five point six, that it would be additional policy that
I have it written there in my notes.
And I, as much as I'd like to not consider it, the the fact is, if we have something in there that sounds like provide a, provide affordable housing. People are either going to outright have objections to it, or do that beat around the bush type of, say it without saying it type thing. That, you know, we don't want certain types of housing, or we don't want that type of housing or something. But the basic, the basic concept is really important, and the fact that we are, we are working on and exploring options to kind of fix that, that hump that people have to get over that. Houses are just too expen, housing is just too expensive right now.
Yeah, so probably not the same topic, but I, with abandoned houses in town, what happens there? I mean, are those still owned by somebody, or? I'm curious, I mean, I think of one, it's might be on Sixth Avenue, I'm not sure, looks like it's, I don't think anyone should be living there, it doesn't look like a place you'd want to live.
If properties are abandoned long enough, the long-term, the, the final resting place for that is usually tax forfeiture, because if somebody's abandoned, they stop paying taxes on it.
Okay, so that, I think that happened in Evlith, because my brother, sister and brother-in-law, like, they bought the house to the lot next door to them for a dollar, and then had to, you know, take care of having the house taken down, whatever.
And they just had, it was a pilot program, and I think it would, might have been like a house in Aurora, two in Evlith, and two in Healy, or, or something like that to renovate those and get those back on the market. Because it does happen where somehow the house is abandoned, it goes tax forfeit. And it's savable. We haven't really had any of those where it's, yes, it's tax forfeit, but you could come in and, and pick this up and you can bank something out of it. We've had bank foreclosures like that, which is a little bit different animal, but we, there has been, have been houses that have gone from a really rundown bank foreclosed property to a to a nicer house.
Yeah. But the buttons are good.
But I, I think it's just a, a matter of as a, as a small community, we don't, we don't have that many houses where you know, if, if a certain percentage of houses that are going to go, are going to go tax forfeited, be decent, we just have a smaller number, so we don't, we don't get there. But that's, and, and tax forfeiture has actually become a way to, people even kind of dump property using tax forfeiture now. Not usually that, houses, usually if it's land, that's, that's no good. If they can't, if they can't sell it, or they don't want to deal with it, they just
Let it go into forfeiture.
Yeah, and the county's kind of had an issue with that in, in past years, when people started doing that, that their tax forfeiture used to be like, everybody was fighting against it, and we got to keep the, and now it's like so if I don't pay the taxes, you have to take it? You don't even, county doesn't even have a, it's not like the county can say, oh, no, we don't want that one.
Yeah.
If they don't pay their taxes for five years, the county has to take it, and now they got a rundown property in their hands. That's, they're working that drive.
That happens, okay, just curious about that. So it's not, it's the county and not the city that deals with that.
But I think so, for a, for a one F, is that we're kind of thinking of some language about creating financial programs to assist with this.
Yes.
There's got to be language to steal from something else.
Okay. We want to, I was going to say, since we were going back on some other sections after thinking about it. In section four, adding somewhere, something about our shovel-ready sites. Since that wasn't the thing when this last one was made.
Were we talking about, Pete?
In section four, or the, the construction stuff? Or commercial, I think it was, and, and from what I was reading, I think that section four was the best spot, what we've got like the cement location down around by the by the train tracks. Something that would be you know, there, there are shovel-ready sites, and I, I don't know if Jeff wants to until it's on our, for the rest of, for the way it's new and how it's been in, but
So are you looking at
You can recap, fix some of those.
Are you looking at, at adding that as a another paragraph?
As a subcategory, yeah. Yeah.
Can I go four point five? No.
So it's, it's kind of
I need to kind of now, I mean, we can make a note of getting it in there, obviously.
So it's kind of a buzzword, but not too bad. Could we just do something like identi, identify shovel-ready sites for commercial development and market them appropriately or aggressively or clearly, you know, so I, I don't know what adjective we want to use on it, but is that kind of what you're, what you're thinking is?
Yeah. I, it's just more of a, you know, see shovel-ready project areas or something like that, you know. It doesn't need to include that whole thing, but just kind of lay it out there.
Were you thinking only commercial though, or were you thinking residential also? Because if you were thinking like both, shovel-ready, maybe under four point one, somewhere in that second paragraph. Because it talks about the land use plan, you know, helping the community responding to individual development and redevelopment requests.
I, I think that either would, would be fine, it was just, I know that we spent, you know, a fair amount of time a few years back working with was it Whitney on getting that, that stuff going with the IRRB, and that that was labeled as shovel-ready, and it's part of their portfolio for the range now, isn't that Jeff still?
Yes.
I think they, do they call it shovel-ready still, or do they call it built-ready?
So shovel-ready is, is, is still in use, and that's another one of those things where you'll see shovel-ready with capital letters as a, as a proper noun, and then shovel-ready actually has a there's kind of a dictionary definition or a defined meaning of that, and, you know, and, and every day you see, they all, let's, oh, look at that that property shovel, shovel-ready, and you could, somebody could build on it. For the shovel-ready program, like what we worked with IRRB, what we worked with Whitney Ridlon on shovel-ready means like it's had, it's had an environmental assessment done on it, and it's, and that's been defined, it's got the utilities, it's the, the title is cleared, all that stuff, so that they can, when they market it on like if you look at the Northland Connection site, which has a lot of the, the, like industrial park, park sites and stuff around here, the Northland Connection site would actually have, you know, this is if it says that it's shovel-ready on there, that's not somebody's opinion that, hey, this would be a nice place to build. It means that if you're, if you're a developer, you're a, a business owner, hey, this is, this has been checked out, that it's been the, the environmental stuff has been done, it's, it, all those question marks have been removed.
They can start their dig, put up what they're going to do.
Oh, is there residential equivalent to that thing as well, or is this
Yes, yeah.
Better from what?
Yep, same thing would apply for residential.
Hmm, cool. That's awesome. So. I where are we, what are we thinking here, seven, twelve, twenty, is there more, you want to schedule a work drop? Next week, I'm really well booked, but I'm hoping the week after is not as bad. Like right now, I've got, oh, I can't do anything on the nineteenth, because that's a federal holiday, you guys probably closed. That's why it's open. I've got the twenty-sixth open.
Twenty-sixth is probably good, you want to do afternoon?
Yeah.
Yeah, that works. June twenty-sixth?
Yeah. What time are we thinking?
Want to do one to three?
Oh.
Okay. I hope it's raining that day, since we'll be inside.
Well, it'll be late June, so you, you know, your chances are pretty high.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I immediately have to retract that, that is the League Minnesota Cities Conference.
Oh.
You'll be in the cities for a conference?
Twenty, Tuesday the twenty-fourth?
The what?
Tuesday the twenty-fourth?
I'm working that day, but if enough other people can come, doesn't matter.
What? I can do the twenty-fifth like around noon.
And, and twenty-five, twenty-six? And, and twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, that's the, that's the league conference.
Oh, okay. All right. Uh, what about, what about the first?
Of July?
Yeah, or the third.
No, not the third.
No, we're, we're talking, yeah. And I, I, I won't make it because I have family in town.
Same where I'll have family visiting.
Okay.
So with the regularly scheduled meeting being July third, do we want to go ahead and just set, just change that meeting and?
Yeah.
Change up to the ten?
Actually, you know what? The, so the, the, the first Thursday is, the first Thursday of the month is planning commission. The second Thursday is P U C. The P U C recently voted to hold their meetings at nine AM instead of five PM. So the evenings of the second Thursday would be good alternate dates for planning commission now.
Okay. It is music in the park at, starting at six thirty on that night?
You want?
On July, are you talking to, to ten, July, ten?
Ten.
Do you want to completely steal the planning commission or the, the P U C's time and do it at, because theirs are, theirs are always at five PM? You can steal the, the old planning, the old P U C time and do it at five PM.
Yeah, I was gonna say that if we, if we do it at five, then we could have a good two hours for our whole spend.
And that would be on July tenth?
Yep.
At five. At five? So that might be hard for Derek or he might come late.
Well, he can show up when he gets, um, work. And it might be raining that day. Five PM, I'm gonna put it time to seven.
And is it going to be to work on the comp plan?
And any other business. It'll, it'll be, it'll be both.
What chapter will be, be looking at?
Well, that's a good question. Do we wanna, should we go and, we've only got through what happened. We want to pull it or not. And I, I've heard a lot of conversation on the things that we want to change and the ones we pulled already. Should we just start the, the ones that we want to pull already and start editing those? And then get that put to bed and then once we're done, then we'll go through the rest of those seven through eleven. That's it. I could be the wrong.
It would be.
So I, I think that would be the way to go is just start nailing out those. You know, there, there's obviously a lot of five we want to do. And, um, you know, sounds like four.
Well, what about through? To try to knock something out for the next meeting, have everybody kind of concentrate and read through four. And kind of keep in mind, since we're removing, removing the term smart growth principles, which of these chapters and which of these principles do we know we want to keep? Do we know we want to throw some out and do we want to tweak some? So you know, going through and, you know, don't jump the gun, but distinctive neighborhoods with a sense of place. Is that?
Right.
Do we want North Sixth Avenue to be a distinctive neighborhood from Second Avenue South? Again, this is where the, some of the stuff fall.
Yes.
It, it kind of trickles down from urban areas where, and.
I was, when, when I read that, I was wondering, in fact, I even have the question written here. Are we talking about, you know, making other areas in Boabik neighborhoods to look like Main Street? I mean, is that what, that's what they're asking? So I'm glad you brought that up because I'm, I wasn't, you know, sure if that's what you're talking. Or are you talking about, you know, out at Giant's Ridge, we have very distinctive neighborhoods. With the villas, you know, with, um, woodlands, with the Voyagers, you know? Whereas in town, we've got East Edition, the Depot. Yeah, yes.
A lot of what these concepts are talking about, it's, uh, you know, even something like Duluth, I, I don't know if you guys have seen it or followed it or at all, but it's, it's kind of a divisive thing. I was just, when you head north out of Duluth on, on highway sixty one, there's those new, some of them are twin homes and some of them are single family homes. They're a cube. They got glass on, they're wood. They got glass on the top. And there is kind of a, a, a movement or an opinion out there that those are the ruin of Duluth. How could anybody possibly let these things? I think they're neat. I have no taste, but I, I think they're kind of neat.
I know you have to go that way and see what you're talking about.
When you're looking at distinctive neighborhoods.
Sixth Avenue, East and London Road. There is a developer who was put in, that used to all be a wooded area. It's right on the bike lane. And there's been controversy about that for quite a few years. Yeah.
And, and I think they are neat in, in Duluth. I think they would have really lost something to put those up in the Congdon neighborhood or put them up in, uh, uh, you know.
Woodland?
Woodland or, or something like that.
West.
But this is north shore, right on the lake. It's a little bit trendy or something like that. So they're, they're kind of neat. So maybe that should be separate from the more historic neighborhoods and everything.
Yeah.
But I don't know that we have that need here.
Distinct, yeah. Yeah. They're rather close to like the Congdon Mansion and the, the original Congdon Mansion and the, the, in that area. So it's quite a historical area. Well, then I, sure I have seen it, but when you say it's close to the bike. Yeah, I biked that along it.
Is it, I don't know.
It's right behind me.
Too far from Brighton Beach, is it?
Actually, it, it was, it's like thirty sixth to forty in, in that area.
I was on a motorcycle at the time, so the distance couldn't be.
Trying to save some feet, sorry.
Oh, I was just saying, yeah, it's a ways away from Brighton Beach if it's on like around Fortieth.
Yeah. It's before forty.
But, um, I've got, uh, filter beating on each other. So I'm gonna wonder if there's any, um, council or mission, commissioner comments or other input.
I, I do have to bring something up because, um, in the Bavarian theme ordinance that the city did pass, um, at our last council meeting, there's an architectural review board that needs to be formed. And it calls for one person on planning and zoning to sit on that committee. And I'm just putting it out there. If there's anybody that would be willing to volunteer to sit on that committee. And what you would do is if somebody in the commercial area wants to ins- um, institute the Bavarian theme, they, they come before the board with their plans and then the board would say, yes, no, tweak it, you know, like that. So I guess it's something.
I'm not gonna put words in their mouth, but I think that he was having his hand up his ass for that. So
Oh, okay.
I will let him or, or whoever else, um, wanna do that, um, knock themselves out.
Okay. So maybe at the next meeting, we can kind of discuss it if somebody wants to do their hat in the ring. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, yeah.
Uh, well, uh, Mary, you got anything else?
No, I can, it can all stay to wait till next time.
Okay. Sally?
No, thank you.
All right. I've got enough of myself and so I will make the motion to adjourn. We have a second?
A second?
All right. All those a favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much. It is seven thirty two and, um, it's been a wonderful time. Thank you.